Relieve whenever you're ready.
I'm good on my hands.
Good evening, I'd like to call the April 14th, 2025 Borough Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as required under Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, specifying time, date, and location by posting a copy of the notice on the municipal building, municipal website, providing a copy of the annual notice schedules in the official newspapers of the borough, and is on file in the clerk's office.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano.
Here.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Manko. Councilwoman Payne.
Here.
Councilman Poznanski.
Here.
Councilman Potter.
Here.
Mayor Murray.
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Vignola.
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan.
Here.
Borough Engineer Luke Skanka.
Here.
Borough Administrator Fred Clark.
Yes.
And Borough Clerk Monica Orlando, President.
Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence which will be called by the speaker.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we are.
Now is the time for public comment, limited to resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, this is the public portion, is limited to comments only on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There'll be a five-minute time limit set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 25-142 by title?
2025-142, authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in total amount of $1,913,305.68.
You have heard the reading of this resolution, are there any questions? May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motioning to approve this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrano, seconded by Councilman Collins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Consent agenda. A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council will be enacted on in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditures are supported by a certification of funds. If any member of council wants any resolutions acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and it will be revoked from the consent resolution.
I do. 2025-145.
We're not there yet.
Okay, is there any others? No? Okay. Will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions, and whereas each of the following resolutions to be presented before the Borough Council at the April 14th, 2025 meeting appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, 2025-144, 2025-146 through 153. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown that each of the above listed resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each were read its entirety at its April 14th, 2025 meeting and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion in a second to approve?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion made by Council President Zambrano, seconded by Councilman Collins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Aye.
Councilman Potter.
Aye.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-145 by title, please?
Authorizing to hire a municipal clerk.
May I have a, what's the pleasure, Council?
Discussion?
We have a motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Collins, and seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Are the, is there any discussion?
This is on 145, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm reluctant, I'm reluctantly asking to table the hiring of a new Borough Clerk. I was not informed that a candidate was in the works. Keep shaking your head.
I will.
Good. I do not know if it's a he, if it is a he or a she. Apparently, I am expected to vote yes, to confirm the candidate that is not acceptable, Council President Zambrano.
It's actually pronounced Zambrano.
I'm speaking. I'm speaking, sir.
You may speak.
I am speaking, sir.
You may speak.
Not according to you. I have every right as an elected representative of the people of Milltown to do my due diligence to make sure that the clerk that I vote for has been completely vetted by me. That would include seeing a resume, speaking with members of the Personnel Committee, a joint discussion with all of council, in a closed session meeting, etc. The Personnel Committee is a recommending body, and I did not receive a recommendation. That means there was at least one member of the governing body that had no knowledge of an upcoming hire. I will have to abstain, as I expect no one will second my motion to table. I'm very disappointed with the Council President's leadership here. This is a personal, political, or he may explain to the residents that there are other reasons to exclude me. His actions are a breach of Robert's Rules of Order, which we follow. According to Robert's Rules, two-thirds vote is required for any motion that takes rights away from members, such as rights include the right to be informed of a pending action. The pending action involved here is the hiring of a Borough Clerk. Thank you, I am done.
Councilman Collins, you look like you have a comment?
No, I just, this is usually the procedure, right? With the Personnel Committee? I didn't have any questions.
Um, may I have a, would the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrano.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Manko? Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Payne.
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski.
Abstained.
Councilman Potter.
Reports from elected officials. Council President Zambrano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on second Tuesday of this month last week, the Robotization Committee met to discuss timeline for Milltown Day. For anybody who doesn't know, last Saturday in September, which is the 27th of September, will be Milltown Day. Rain or shine, registration should be open shortly. Again, we have a timeline that goes through April all the way through September with certain actions that we're going to take, including maybe mixing it up, the proceeds this year, instead of adding more planters, maybe we'll go with some signage on polls, much like other towns have in past years. HRC Committee met on the first Tuesday of the month, which is April 1st, discussed a number of items. HRC would like me to, uh, the HRC Committee would like me to just wish everyone a happy Passover, which started on Saturday. Would like to wish everybody that they had a nice, calm Sunday as we get ready for Holy Week, and to have a happy Easter Sunday. Two observances this year, or this month I should say, are April is Death History Month, and it is also Holocaust Remembrance. And that concludes my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got three reports, so people are gonna get tired of me in about two minutes. I had, the important one is, I have a letter from the Environmental Commission requesting that they change the date of Earth Day from April 19th to May 10th. Dear Mayor and Council, we, the Environmental Commission, are writing a request to change the date for our Earth Day, Clean Up and Fair. It has come to our attention that the original date is April 19th, does not work for our community. We are requesting a change of date to May 10th, 2025. The event will still be held at Mill Pond Park from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., no rain date. As in previous years, we would like to have a cleanup around the town and we'll have tables around the park area. The tables will offer earth-friendly information, demonstrations, and vendors. We would also like to have a family-friendly activity, such as a beanbag toss and kayaking, to truly make it a fun, family fun day. For our event to be successful, we are asking collaboration and support from the Borough of Milltown. We would not be able to have our cleanup without the support from the Department of Public Works. DPW does not just help with the collecting of litter around the town from the cleanup, they assist in setting up the park at Mill Pond Park and provide gloves, bags, pickup tools for cleanup participants. Ralph and his crew were an integral part of our day, from the setup to cleanup. We could not run the event without them. We would also ask the Recreation Department to join us again this year with the help. We are able to offer families fun games and activities at the park throughout the day. The games provided by the Recreation Department prompted families to stay and enjoy the day and take some time together, the information offered at the tables in the park. We will strive to make this a special community event and will showcase various public and private offerings in our town. We thank you for considering the request and sincerely hope that each of you can support and join us in celebrating Milltown's Earth Day, Milltown Earth Day and Clean Up and Fair this year, respectfully, the Environmental Commission. Do we need any thing to pass that, or do we need to talk to Ralph to make sure the date's open?
I believe that they checked with everybody on the dates open.
Dates open, okay.
Yeah, it was just a matter of you guys saying okay, so I could put an official resolution on for the next meeting.
That's fine.
We have a, there's still openings for the Environmental Commission, if we have any volunteers, and the Schwendemann Cavi Committee, there's also several openings.
And we're gonna reuse the waiver for kayaking that you drew up last year.
If there's gonna be kayaking, I would love everybody to sign away.
That's what I'm saying, we're gonna use the same one that you produced last year.
Sounds good.
I went to the library meeting Tuesday, April 8th. I just go over some of the highlights. There's a new book page that you can preview books at the library, so if anybody wants to buy a book or check out a book, you can check out the book page preview at the library. They gave over 50 new library cards to fifth graders and over 80 in the month of March were issued. And I was very impressed with the librarian Charlie, said that we're tied in with the rest of other communities, like 90% of the communities in Middlesex County, and we have access to over a million books that are available to the residents. And I'll talk about the security cameras later, they went over. And the Board of Health meeting, rabies event will be May 27th, 6 to 8:00 p.m. at the DPW building. And that concludes my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Did any councilmen make other reports, or will they be ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Police Department, between March 1st and March 31st, the police responded to 1,281 calls for service. During this period, the police conducted 111 radar details in numerous locations, they made 483 motor vehicle stops during this period, and they investigated nine motor vehicle accidents. Of the 20 days of school in March, police covered 44 crossing courses. 22 arrests were made, various shoplifting, three arrests for DWI active warrants, two arrests for aggravated assault, and one arrest for possession of a controlled dangerous substance. Solicitor permits, the only thing that I want to add that the chief felt was important for everyone to note is that the department has issued five solicitor permits, and that includes the identification cards by the Borough of Milltown through the Police Department. These permits were issued to individuals who are working for a home remodeling company. If they're not displayed, you should ask any individual who comes to your door to show you their permit. The ID card will display their photo, name, company, title, issue date, and expiration date. If you do not want solicitors to knock on your door, then sign up to be added to the Do Not Knock list, and the form can be found on the Borough website. If you have any doubts, of course, call the non-emergency number at the Police Department. The Police Department is always asking me to remind you about that they'll do a residential security check, and to also always check the civic-ready emergency alert when you receive those. And some of those can be messages from Public Works, or from the Borough Clerk's Office, the Senior Center Rec, and so on. So if you haven't signed up, please do so. You can, to receive those messages, text the word MILLTOWN in all capital letters to For the Milltown Fire Department, just some general information that the Fire Department very active lately, as always, I should say, in terms of their community efforts. On March 20th, Chief Fong, along with members of the Rescue Squad, attended a CPAC meeting at Spotswood High School, and CPAC stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Group, to discuss and answer questions concerning special needs people during emergency calls, and among the topics were community involvement with the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, giving out information on the county's special needs program and registry. They were able to help a parent of hearing impaired child using the resources from both the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department, and they reached out to many resources inside our, inside our department, inside their departments to find her links to vibrating smoke alarms. There was also training, it's called SCBA, which stands for Self-Contained Breathing Apparatus, or better known as air packs. And there were fit testing along with initial training on the new air packs, which were part of last year's grant, and new packs are in service and all members are trained. Piscataway and Milltown joined together for training on March 30th, at the Piscataway Fire Training Facility. I was also invited to attend Student Government Day at the Fire Department, and I gotta tell you, I learned a lot, but I was a little disappointed that there was no room for me in the fire trucks to get driven home, but they did that, did that for the students. I tried on one of those air packs, and a jacket that weighs like, I think, 75 pounds. I don't know, you know, our police and fire and rescue folks are amazing. So it was a really good presentation for the students, and they had stations set up and, you know, they pushed the buttons on the truck and held the hose, and it was really, really awesome. I was glad to be invited. Members are always needed at the Milltown Fire Department, and anyone that's interested in joining can stop by the firehouse on Monday night at 6:30 or email, joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. And my last report is the Milltown Rescue Squad. For March, there was a total of 85 calls, 52 in Milltown, 22 on the Turnpike, and Rescue, Rehab, and Mutual Aid made up the rest. The squad, like the Fire Department, is always looking to recruit new talent. They are accepting applications now for summer onboarding, so anyone interested in learning about joining the Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescue squad.org. Applications for July 2025 need to be submitted by June 15th. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilman Poznanski?
Sure. First, I'm gonna speak about the Senior Center. Tuesday, April 22nd, 9:30, bus trip to Ollie's in Trader Joe's. Monday, April 28th, 10:45, bus trip to the Shrimp Box. The VNA nurse will be available for appointments on Tuesday, April 15th, from 12 to 3:00 p.m. The service is available for Milltown seniors free of charge each month. Please sign up on the bulletin board if you are interested. We have a weekly lunch program on Wednesdays, sponsored by Elijah's Promise on Wednesdays, 12:30. There is such a need for shelters that we will continue collecting throughout the year. This includes unopened dog and cat food, litter and unused toys and accessories. For the DPW report, street sweeping has taken place and is ongoing to meet DEP regulations. Staff continue to address any potholes that need to be repaired. Please use the report concern feature on the Borough webpage to report any new potholes. Street signs, stop signs, repairs, and replacements have taken place and is ongoing. Branches and brush have been trimmed back. Tennis court cleanup for the upcoming season also. Work has taken place at all baseball fields in town in preparation for, well, it's already happened, opening day was on the 5th. Road repairs and water main break holes will begin to take place throughout the town now that the asphalt plants have opened. Next recycle date is April 17th. That concludes my reports, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Milltown Recreation Department, we appreciate everyone who joined us for the New Jersey Devils game. It was a terrific game and an enjoyable evening. Our late winter soccer clinic completed on April 3rd with a wonderful turnout. On Tuesday, March 25th, the Fresh Theatre Arts Program students performed "Life School Musical" and did an outstanding job. Registration is still open for the Spring Musical Theatre Program of Annie, which is scheduled to begin on April 22nd and end on June 10th. The first chess session was a big success. The second session started on March 21st and will end on April 28th. The application deadline for seasonal summer employment was on Tuesday, April 1st. Any applications received after that date will be placed on a waitlist. All adult and youth spring programs are set to begin next week. Registration is still open for the Adult Coed Softball League and will close on Sunday, April 20th. Please visit Community Pass to register. We are thrilled to announce the launch of our new Pilates program. Registration fills up quick, and the program is scheduled to begin on Tuesday, April 22nd. Pool memberships for the Borough Pool will be on sale on April 25th. Please visit Community Pass, purchase your bags. Alberta Avenue Camp and CIT registration will open on April 25th. Camp is scheduled to begin on March, on Monday, June 30th. Spring is here, don't forget to get in touch with the Recreation Department to secure your date to rent Albert Avenue Park. You can complete the fillable application on the Recreation website. Please be sure to visit our Recreation webpage, familiarize yourself with the upcoming programs to register. For any of the programs, please visit Community Pass. From the Milltown Planning Board, the meeting scheduled for April 2nd was canceled, the next meeting is scheduled for May 7th. And from the Milltown Fourth of July Organization, we're less than three months away from the big day, the Milltown Fourth of July Organization thanks everybody for their continued support. Don't forget to participate in our Super 50/50 raffle. Limited tickets are still available, and join us for our next time to donate the event at Tescoal's Great Oven Pizza. And join us for our next time to donate event at Tesco's Greek Oven Pizza on April twenty-second and twenty-third. And if you wish to be a sponsor or participate in the parade, please visit our Milltown Fourth of July website, or follow us on Facebook and Instagram. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but Councilman, Councilman Manko's report is in the packet.
Counselor Lerman, just pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Milltown Borough Electric Monthly Report. Winds knocked down, knocked over a large tree on West Lakewood Drive. The span of electric wires was broken. Utilities made the area safe for the tree removal contractor and then replaced the span of wires. There were two separate calls for flickering lights. Department members did the troubleshooting with the aid of our load beast troubleshooting device. One house needed new wires for the street, and the other had an internal issue. Two streetlights were repaired, and one replaced with an energy-efficient LED fixture. Our new pole trailer made its maiden voyage to the utility pole vendor in Old Bridge to pick up a small pole for the firehouse. We took down two trees. They took down, not me. They took down two trees, one for the Northbrook Drive project, and one for the Albert Avenue Path project. VPW crews assisted with the chipping. Line clearance was performed on Desmond Clay Rosewood in Southbrook. Aggressive line currents has resulted in fewer outages. Inspections were performed on poles in various areas. More replacements are being planned. Utility Department assisted the building department with customer issues, replacing electric meters where necessary. And the Water Utility Report. Monitoring of pump stations occurs on a regular schedule. Emergency scheduled markouts occur daily. Staff do final meter readings and handle resident concerns and complaints. Please sign up for the Water Meter Replacement Program through Vepo. Replace the hydrant on Northbrook, and on North Main Street, and on South Main Street. And a reminder that flushing will start on Saturday, April nineteenth, from seven AM to three PM, every day until the town is completed. And that is for my report.
Thank you. Our Attorney, Peter Vignola.
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. The Borough has received a number of requests recently for the ability to put memorials on Borough properties, and we do have those requests. We're processing them and trying to figure out how to comprehensively come up with how to handle such requests and respond to them. So hopefully by next meeting, we'll have something ready.
Thank you. Keep out. Our Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, the report, an update on the Water Meter Project. To date, eight hundred and eighty-one replacements have been completed. That's two hundred and forty-eight more than were done at the time of the last council meeting. Nine others are complete and are going through the final validation process. Forty-two are incomplete, and one hundred and eighty-six others are currently scheduled. Secondly, on the Northbrook Drive improvements, the tree removals have been completed, and the contractor is presently removing and replacing the curbs with the new granite block curbing.
Thank you. Business Administrator Fred Carr.
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Borough Clerk, Marianne Burt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One big announcement I have for the polling locations for Election Day. There were a lot of complaints last year about District Four being here at Borough Hall, since District Four is at, is within the area of Joyce Kilmer. So we did get permission from the Council to switch District Four back. Postcards will be going out, and for the primary election and elections going forward, District One and District Three will be here at Borough Hall. District Two and District Four will be at Joyce Kilmer School, and Districts Five through Nine will remain at the Senior Center. Postcards will be going out to all the households affected by this change. Primary is June tenth, as I've been reminding everybody. The next thing is May twelfth is our Youth and Government Meeting. We have eleven students from the Joyce Kilmer School coming to run our meeting, so I hope everybody tunes in to see that. And Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash one forty-five is hiring a new municipal clerk. She will be starting May fifth. I, I am staying on board through the end of May to help transition her. I want to thank everybody for their patience with the Clerk's Office, as I try and juggle both jobs and get to everybody's request as quickly as I can. I am staying on as the Planning Board Secretary, so I'm all completely gone from Milltown, and that is all I have for my report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council?
Yes, Mayor, although I'm not sure, so maybe you can help me. I'm not sure if this is old business or new business. But I think it's maybe old business, because Councilman Pazansky spoke about this about a half hour ago, so I guess that makes it old business. And I just want to say, so that it's clear for the residents, I'm a member of the Personnel Committee, along with Council President Zambrana and Councilman Manko. And we have, have been a very busy committee, having to hire various positions since I came on board. We have been diligent in reviewing resumes, working with our municipal clerk, working with our business administrator, to review every single application that comes in. We all work together as a committee, along with our professionals, to decide who, you know, would be the right fit for an interview. The municipal, the municipal clerk that we hired tonight was initially interviewed by the business administrator and the municipal clerk, and we were invited to meet, the Personnel Committee met with the candidate, and we had a lot of questions, and we had a good discussion with her, and we felt that she was the right fit. As Councilman Collins pointed out, this is how normally committees work, right? That, you know, committees tackle issues and make recommendations to the council for vote. There was a comment made by Councilman Pazansky that he wasn't aware of the hire and he hadn't seen the resume. That it's all included in the packet of information that we receive as councilpeople, and we received those packets on Thursday, which gives every council member plenty of time to review. And in that packet was the resume that Councilman Pazansky certainly was able to review. And with that, when we get those packets, if any council member has a question on anything in the packet, which is the business of what we do at every meeting, they can ask anyone, any one of us, any questions about any of the work that we do on any of the committees. So Councilman Pazansky did not call me to ask me about the hiring of the municipal clerk, and he could have, you know, but he had the information in the packet that we receive for every meeting. So I just wanted to be clear in terms of the process, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Payne, you're a recommended committee?
I found out, and I'm sure Council President would find this interesting, I found out from Dunkin', somebody Dunkin' Donuts on Friday had hired a new clerk, and they laughed when I said I didn't know anything about it. Do you have anything to say about that, sir?
You had the council packet on Thursday.
No.
Councilman Pazansky.
I didn't rush.
It was available on Thursday.
Okay, Counselor Lerman.
Ms. Orlando, are the packets, or is the stuff uploaded on the website on Thursday or Friday?
Everything was done on Thursday. It was Thursday night when I uploaded it to the website, because I had to get home to my kids. But packets were done Thursday afternoon, emailed out to council Thursday afternoon, and then uploaded for the public later that day.
Okay, thank you. Is that it for old business? Does any member of council have any new business to bring before council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just had a couple things. One was on the contract for the Snack Shack that is out. I don't know, maybe, you know, we should advertise a little better. It's a minimum bid's a thousand dollars. The only thing I had a problem with is this packet is like ninety-five stipulations in here. It's, we get a thousand dollars from the Snack Shack, but how many, much in legal bills do we pay for this contract?
Our QPA drew that up.
What's that?
The QPA drew that up, so you got nothing in legal bills.
Oh, okay, because it's like extensive. I mean, the person would need an attorney to read it. It's like, what is it, ninety-five numbers on it? The next thing I wanted to talk about was the security camera at the library parking lot. There was back and forth between the public safety and the library about who should pay for it. So, and I'm not sure if we have the manpower to re, you know, watch the camera. That's another question we have. But I think we should really seriously consider that next year, about putting a security camera in the library parking lot, you know? And that's all I have for tonight. Happy holidays to all.
Okay. I'll close new business. Open to the public. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comments until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session, so please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder that under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during their public input part of the meeting shall be limited to five minutes. And may, after other speakers have finished, be allowed to speak for a second five-minute
Olivia Locandro, eight West Lawrence Street. Hello, I'm Olivia Locandro, the student representative member of Milltown's Human Relations Committee, and we're continuing our mission to bring attention to lesser-known periods of observance for marginalized groups. April is Death History Month, aiming to recognize the millions of individuals who are impacted by some form of hearing loss, as well as the culture surrounding the heart of hearing and deaf community. Over the years, medical and social responses to hearing loss have positively shifted, and it's important to continue being conscious of the differences we individuals face, respecting American Sign Language, hearing aids, cochlear implants, and many others. As a society working to bring more recognition to disabilities, awareness and inclusion are both paramount, as well as educating oneself on different experiences that make up someone's everyday life. For more resources regarding hearing loss, the National Association of the Deaf, or the NAD, and the Hearing Loss Association of America, the HLA, are terrific resources, as well as online videos and classes that teach ASL. Furthermore, all libraries within our book trading system have a plethora of extremely informative books, some sharing the experience of being hard of hearing, and others as references for learning ASL. Milltown has always stood by the message of respecting everyone, regardless of what they look like or if they act differently, and let us continue to uphold that during Death History Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Ellen Davis, Schwendeman Davis. I live at one-nineteenth South Main Street. I'd like to res, refer to Resolution twenty-twenty-five-one-five-two, appointing members to the Schwendeman Homestead Subcommittee. Thank you, Mayor and Borough Council. I'm deeply grateful for your commitment to advancing the plans for Schwendeman's Nature Center. The project is not just a development, it is a testament to our community's dedication to preserving and celebrating the natural world. As many of you, as many as you, as many of you know, my father was a renowned taxidermist at the Museum of Natural History in New York. His passion for wildlife, I'm sorry, and his meticulous craftsmanship brought the wonders of nature to countless visitors, not only to the museum but to Milltown itself. He would be incredibly proud to see this nature center come to life, serving as a beacon of education and conservation in Milltown. Not only that, it's going to be a place for relaxation, countless opportunities for scouts, both boys and girls, and a lot of opportunities to make it a beautiful place. I want to thank you once again for your support and vision. Together, we're creating something truly special for Milltown.
Thank you. Lee Weisenberger, ninety-nine JFK Drive. I have a little question today on the way the departments work in town. Basically, for the attorneys that represent us in each of those departments, like Ford Avenue, Mr. Cahill, what he does, would that become Borough property, or does he retain that?
All right, I don't know that answer.
I don't know specifically what you're asking about, so if you want to talk offline, I'm not sure this is the forum for a question of that.
I can address one to you then, Mr. Vignola, if it helps. Right now, you have a title search on the River of Treasure.
I have a copy.
You have a copy?
Yes, yes, sir.
Right. That's Borough property then now?
No, it's actually my own copy, because the original, the first office, I believe, it's been provided to Ms. Arlene A. Jones' predecessor.
Okay, that's good. That's what we're driving at. In today's world, that would be electronic and then paper, or one way or the other. In the past, it would've been paper?
Yes.
More than like that, going back.
We haven't had a lot of politics for it, so.
Right. The Borough wouldn't destroy a title search that was done in the past? Be an important piece of document?
Depends on what you, it depends on what you did the title search for, and whether you acquired the property, and whether you got a title policy. There's a number of reasons why you might not keep a title search.
Even if the Borough did it?
Even if the Borough did.
Okay. That's my wire. Appreciate it.
Is that it? No? Okay, I will close public comment. Council comments, is there anyone from council that would like to bring something up at this point?
I have two items. I'd like to go last if there's anyone who wants to go before me. Okay. First, I'm going to do what I do often, and I'm going to honor certain groups here. This is for the first responders. Milltown's first responders deserve to be honored tonight, so I will do that. Our Police Department is second to none when it comes to protecting our citizens, from our very youngest to our elders, such as my dear friend George Geis. They serve in every important capacity, even crossing precious children at crosswalks. If you feel safe day and night in Milltown, thank you. Milltown Police Department. Your Fire Department, professionally trained and led, is ready at a moment's notice, putting themselves in harm's way for you and your family. With proper safety gear and heroism, these brave volunteers rush into dangerous homes as others are rushing out. They help their fellow firefighters from other towns also when needed. Lastly, they're devoted and skillfully trained in the saving of lives and ready to be at your home with just a call, our wonderful Rescue Squad. Whether the emergency be in town or on the turnpike, these well-trained, dedicated, and compassionate volunteers deserve our respect, thanks, and smile. Even though the police are paid and the other first responders are volunteers, the one thing that always stands out to me is one word, selflessness. It says so much about a person, their true self, and in other words, their character. Now, my second discussion is not an easy one. I'm going to, I'm going to address something, and it's actually very painful to me. I'm addressing my comments on a Facebook site in Milltown regarding the state's findings of Milltown schools' education statistics, which were very poor. I visited school board meetings last year. I spoke about how much taxpayer money goes to the Board of Education. I asked questions for transparency to the beleaguered taxpayers. I was rebuffed. No one answered a single question. I have never questioned the hard-working, beloved, dedicated teachers. All the president of the Board of Education kept repeating with a smile to me was, "Come to a budget meeting, Counselor." I did go to a budget meeting, and I was not happy with what I had seen. I'm going to read the few comments on the Facebook site that I weighed in on.
Mayor, I'd like to raise a point of order. I would like to raise a point of order.
You are at court.
I'd like to raise a point of order.
Mayor, please tell her.
Mayor.
I am speaking. But a person is speaking.
I have the right to statement of judgment.
Peter, you understand Robert's rules. Am I wrong?
Yes, and I'm following.
Hang on one second. I will admit that I am not well-versed in all of Robert's rules, and I also admit that this organization, while it observes Robert's rules, doesn't particularly always follow Robert's rules. So, I will start from there. Certainly, Councilman Pazansky has the full, Councilwoman Payne has indicated that she is a point of order, that I don't know what it is yet, so I would. I said it's a point of order. And she doesn't agree with this.
Can you let Mr. Vignola speak, please? Let him finish.
I think it might be for her to find out what Councilwoman Payne's point of order is, and then we can decide whether or not. and then we can decide whether or not it needs to be resolved by the council. Poznanski, if you can continue. Mr. Vignola, I'm out of order. She did not. I dare say I heard her say it. Yeah, so.
So, Ms. Payne, can you please just? So, the business of the Board of Ed is separate and apart from the business of council. There is nothing on the current agenda for tonight that speaks to the issues that Councilman Poznanski is attempting to make. He is also commenting on social media posts that I think is inappropriate and not substantiated in terms of the nature of the topic that he's talking about. And so my objection is that he is out of order talking about this issue.
And I would merely indicate that this is the council comment portion of our meeting, and Councilwoman Poznanski has the ability to discuss any topic that she believes is relevant to the business of the Borough of Milton. And while I understand your position, certainly if you had a topic that you would like to bring up, you would have that be afforded the same opportunity. So, while I understand what your point is, he would still have the ability to make discussions.
Thank you, Peter. I just want the record to reflect the point of order was raised and I object to the comments that Councilwoman Poznanski is making.
Counselor, please continue.
I will find a Robert's rules where a person is speaking, and has the floor, and I will continue. But please keep in mind also that the Board of Education meetings have around fifteen chairs for visitors to attend and are not filmed or televised, so busy parents have very little transparency from the responsible body. Now, I will read my comments that I know were passed around once to you and your group. My first comment, it's about someone who is reporting that the GOP is brainwashing people. But what I said, the numbers are factual. It's the numbers that I saw that I was regarding. My second comment, eighteen million dollars of taxpayer money, and I have gone to the school board meetings and brought this up, and over seven million dollars of state-funded taxpayer dollars this year. We should expect students to be performing at a top-tier level. Something is going wrong, something needs to be investigated and turned around quickly. The children deserve better and so do the taxpayers and parents. I'm very respectful in my comments and I hope other people can see this. My next comment, I've gone to school board meetings and rarely see a parent unless they have an issue. When I speak at meetings, they do not respond to me, yet council is responsible for funding everything that they do, which is true. My next comment, look at the budget, see the expenses beside teacher salaries. Hierarchies are very deep. Standing expenses are high. You will not be happy with what you see. There is no oversight from council. We are accountable for the money. The Board of Education is unaccountable to the taxpayers. My next comment, I invited the superintendent, I won't use her name, to come to a council meeting to have a dialogue with the intent of informing the community of her goals for the students, and she declined. My last comment, it's to a person that I know, I won't use his name, blank. I think it's sixty-eight percent or so, in addition to two million for busing. They also received around seven and a half million dollars from state taxpayer money. She also asked for an additional two percent each year, which they are allowed to do. Those are my comments. Now, I'm going to continue. Council President Zambrana, please inform the audience just where I was in your words, inciting violence to the superintendent, who happens to be a woman. Where was I inciting violence, sir?
Counselor.
I am asking you a question.
I'm going to continue.
I'm asking you a question, sir. Answer, when you said I incited violence, sir?
Continue. Okay. This is not the appropriate use of Borough Council.
Oh, yes, it is, sir.
Board of Education.
You're defaming me, sir. You're inciting violence against me.
Borough, the Board of Education is not important to council.
Okay, I'd like to reclaim my time, please. People might ask my question, so I want to reclaim my time. Okay? You also stated that I was, that it was embarrassing that I said and that I am embarrassed, correct? Okay. Okay, that's your opinion?
It is my opinion.
Your opinion means nothing to me, sir. You stated this is a very bad, bad look for making.
It is. Any comment that you make, whether you think or not, makes us look like we're all off like you and that we think the same.
How so? That's, I'm speaking on my own, sir. That's right. That's right. I'm able to speak for myself and I'm also speaking for the people in town. To be transparent for the people in town who get nothing from the Board of Ed. There are no cameras. There are fifteen seats, sir.
What I would do if I were you?
I didn't ask you a question.
That's fine. What I would do if I were you is, what I would do is I would go and get our council liaison here at the Board of Education, who is a former Board of Education member, to get in, to talk about all these things that you're not happy about, or that, or even get put together a group to answer these kinds of questions.
Okay, may I continue?
Sure.
Okay.
You're mad.
I will not treat you with the disrespect that you continually treat me. There is military expression that applies here. You salute the rank, not the man. Council President, I sent you three very important texts, February twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, all unanswered. I received an email from you in the evening of April eighth asking for a call. I called April ninth, no answer, no callback. On April eleventh, an email asking if I am free for a call. My exact message was, "I should be available around seven, you may call me then." In your text berating me, you told me that you did not return my call because I don't tell you when to call me. Is that correct?
You're calling yet, it's not the same.
Uh, no, sir. I'm asking you.